This conference will now be recorded.
Maybe you can hear us?
That's right. I offered to bring a new one. I offered to bring-
Amy, can you hear us?
That's right. I offered to bring a new one. I offered to bring-
Everybody can hear us alright?
Just about there.
I did, he didn't. No, but it is reported, I'm looking at it. Says it's in the-
I've got 59. It is eight o'clock, Chairman.
Is the stereo turned on?
The United Institute of Flag of the United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world where justice is for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. First order of business will be to approve the agenda. Sorry, change of course.
One addition would be at 8:15 under the sheriff's time would be discussion and potential approval of the Guardian RFID agreement, and I would remind members that are on board that this is a building committee meeting following today's commission meeting.
Otherwise, no change.
Move to approve as amended.
Second. Okay. Motion by Kennedy, second, this next slate for approval of the agenda as commanded. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. There will be conflicts.
Yep.
Okay. We need approval of the regular meeting minutes and the board of adjustment minutes from table. Move to approve. Second. Okay. Motion by Tisdale, second by sleep for approval of the minutes. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Right.
Opposed, motion carried.
Chairman, does that include the Board of Equalization?
Yeah.
Okay.
I stated it so.
Okay.
We're trying to move along here. Right, step by the step. Yeah. Part of the solution.
I know. I am the problem, yes. You all know that.
Bills. Questions on the bills. Second.
As well.
Thank you.
Move to pay the bills.
Second. Okay. Motion in seconds for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Just a second.
Let me see.
First number of-
I do, I have quite a few. So we'll start with, on the adder's office, I have two step raises, one for Kimberly Atkins, going to a county employee three, grade three, base pay of 2668 effective on May 18th. And then Krista Schroeder, step raise, going to a county employee two, grade three, base pay of 2491, also effective on 5/18.
To approve the adder's personnel changes. Second. Okay. Motion in seconds for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. The next one is equalization. There's a step raise for Christine Mackey, going to a Fraser two, grade two, base pay at 2755. This will be effective on 5/4.
I'll move to approve the equalization changes. Step raise.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
To Gerald?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Okay, General Government Buildings, a new hire, Richard Reed. He is a full-time permanent employee, Stodian one, grade one, base pay of 2021, effective on May 18th.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. Motion in seconds for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And these are all for, the next four are for invasive species. Only has a new hire, Shaylan Jenkins, sprayer GPS one, grade one, base pay of 1786, and these are all full-time seasonal employees, and this is effective on May 12th. And then Chase Tyson is a step raise, going to a sprayer GPS three, grade two, base pay of 2418, effective on May 12th. And then Dalton Davis, sprayer GPS one, grade three, base pay of 1976, effective on May 12th. And then Logan Kussler, sprayer GPS one, grade two, base pay of 1882, and this will be effective on May 12th as well.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion by sleep, second by Tisdale for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
All right. To Sheriff's Office, we have six of them. We have a new hire, Jonah Hedabone. He will be a correction officer one, grade two, base pay of 2456. He is a full-time permanent employee, and this was an emergency hire, effective on May 6th. And then Jeremy Peters is a new hire. He is also a full-time permanent employee, correction officer one, grade one, base pay of 2408, effective on May 14th. And then Caleb Walling is a new hire, part-time fill-in employee, correction officer one, grade one, base pay of 2408, effective on May 14th. Then Luke Kitts Miller is a classification change. He is going to be a deputy two, grade two, base pay of 3333. He is a full-time permanent employee, effective on May 13th. Vanessa Adrian, classification change. She is going to work part-time fill-in, correction officer two, grade three, base pay of 2661, effective on May 14th. And then Gerald McKenzie, this is a step raise, going dispatcher two, grade one, base pay of 2555, effective May 18th. And I think that is the end of my pile.
Motion by you on the- Motion to approve the sheriff's personnel changes. Second. Okay. Motion by Tisdale, second by Jennings for approval of the sheriff's office. Request, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
All righty, that's all I have for person M.
Travel request?
I do have one for Amber Voight from the Planning and Zoning, going to the 2025 Western Planners Conference in Bend, Oregon, from April 12th through the 19th, and to also allow for a travel.
Okay, and I see that her footnote, she's taken care of two of those.
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion by planning, second by Tisdale for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Not yet, Brenda?
That is it.
Okay, you're up for auditor's account with the trailer.
All righty. This is as of April 30th, 2025. Total amount of deposits in the bank says $39,706,883.19. Included in that balance are the bank balance of $38,620,386.84, and the money market of Total amount of actual cash is $1,350. Total amount of checks and drafts in the treasurer's possession not exceeding three days is $1,145,907.86. And then the cash is $26,742.9. Petty cash, $2,725, for a total of $40,883,608.14.
Move to approve of the auditor's account with the trailer. Second. Motion by sleep, second by Jennings for approval of the auditor's account. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 2025-21, supporting the candidacy for a term on the SPPAA board.
Mr. Chairman, 2025-21 would allow me to try to serve another term on the South Court of Public Assurance.
Sounds like that's a good deal, Bruce.
I enjoy it. I learn a lot.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay. Motion by Sheriff, second by sleep for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution 2025-22, requesting restoration of invasive species bugs on Black Hills Island.
Chairman, if I may, I think the resolution is self-explanatory. It originated, I think, in Pennington County, from Mr. Duffy there, who's Pennington County National Resources Director, looking to have Black Hills County support this resolution to be submitted to our congressional delegation.
Move approval. Second. Okay. Motion by sleep, second by Jennings for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right. Commission meeting date changed. All right, get on there, guys.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so it was suggested that maybe the meeting originally set for June 24th, excuse me, be moved to Monday, June 23rd, so that's presented today for your consideration.
What, I don't have a problem with that. Well, why are we moving?
Because of me.
Oh, okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. We've got a motion in a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And that'll be your first round of budget discussions.
Right.
At the end of all. Thank you. I think I provided an updated calendar.
Okay, I'll check it.
Good morning.
Gotcha.
Work is continuing at the Public Safety and Services Center. Things are going very well. We're knocking off large numbers of things that we had yet to accomplish. We're still hopeful for that mid-July timeframe when we can wrap things up in full measure. I'm happy to report that the facility and our staff are outperforming our business model by roughly $19,456.60 in one month. Month of April, from April 1st through April 30th, our revenue stream for incarcerating other inmates is $103,456.60. That includes $102,410 in housing and an additional $1,046.60 in transport. So everybody up there is working hard on behalf of the taxpayers, and I think that that's extremely positive for where we are. Next, I would like to draw your attention to a contract that I believe you received yesterday, maybe the day before. So as we're outperforming our business model, there's only one way that that happens right now, and that's if we put more inmates in there than what that original business model had projected. More inmates means more work. More inmates also means more toilet paper, more toothpaste, more movement within the facility. So I want to try to do something to help our staff out, and that's exactly what this Guardian program does. It can integrate with our existing software. It enables our corrections officers to carry with them what is called a Spartan. And the shortest way to understand exactly what that is, is it is about the size of a smartphone, and it has an RFID scanner on it. So each inmate has a wristband. In that wristband is an RFID chip, and it just enables the corrections officers to, in real-time, record movement, record the issuing of supplies. It records who got a meal that day, and it charts it all quite nicely. So what it really does, I believe, will help us save money, it'll help us be more efficient, it'll help us be safer. The cost to the county is $11,901.26 for the first year, and then it obligates us to two additional years at $11,200 per year, with an option to extend that another three years. I would not bring this before you if I did not think this was a must. I believe it to be a must. It's going to increase us in a number of our safety and efficiency in a number of different ways. In addition to that, $11,901.26 is another $4680. It creates a bridge between the Guardian program and our existing jail software. So-
That a one-time offense?
That, Greg, is actually working diligently on our behalf to try to sort that out. We believe that to be a one-time offense, so that's where- So I'm happy to answer any questions in that regard, but specifically, that's what I'm asking for permission is to sign on Lawrence County's behalf for that contract.
Any questions? Discussion action.
Well, it's not much sense to us trying to reinvent the wheel. Software out there available to make this smoother, especially to transition to this expansion, I think.
Not sound like it's huge for safety as well.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay. We've got a motion by planning, second by Tisdale for approval. Any further discussion? Same amount, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Is Bob gonna sign that or you?
I'll sign this one. Next before you is a professional services agreement. This is not unique. This is something that we have our phlebotomist sign, but it's most appropriate for our chairman to sign, so I ask that the board give the chairman permission to sign, in effect, the hiring of another contractor for you to serve as a phlebotomist.
So moved.
Okay. Okay. Motion by planning, second by Jennings for approval. For the discretion, same amount, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Will you sign your short term and sign this?
And then respectfully, Mr. Chairman, unless Dr. Arthur tells me otherwise, I think that's all.
I'm gonna have to sign with more copy.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we're talking to sheriff, and we have a meeting set for the, just looking at the-
M.
Oh, sorry. We have a meeting set for the 29th.
For me?
Yep.
Still on Billy.
Moving forward.
And that's what I have.
Thank you, sir. To have a-
We have a schedule for that towards the end of June, where we're going to try to talk about the-
I'm not on our agenda, it's where we're beginning the public hearings, which is not supposed to start always. So we'll take a quick little break. Zoom at 8:25 so that we're on schedule. Huh? I'm going by the agenda. But you behave.
Can I have you sign?
Oh, okay.
So we're just breaking.
Do you want to copy?
I'll do this, please.
I'll bring you one right now.
Okay.
...work process for plant news in Missouri. It's 110,000 square foot expansion, $95 million, and all they do is make bacon.
$110,000 bucks for $95 million? They have a hospital.
For bacon.
It's delicious bacon, that's-
Yeah. A lot of bacon, huh?
Yes, Carol.
Thanks, Brian.
Sorry. What did you do wrong?
I am holding up the meeting.
How were recessed till the-
2:25. 8:25?
Your hand on all these?
Yes. I'm scared to touch it.
This conference will now be recorded.
You could have just ignored his statement.
Yeah.
I guess-
Maybe you need the volume again.
Okay, you still don't hear anything. A lot of talking, so we'll wait and see now if it comes up. Back order. We have a bunch of public hearings. Prior to getting started, I will tell you how that works. When it comes time for the public to interact, we will, we would ask that you would please state their name and address for the record, and you'll be allowed to speak at that time. First one is class retail malt beverage wine license for Andrew Haymans.
Yes, this is for, as you said, Andrew Haymans, for the DBC Cabin Investments LLC, and the legal description- And the legal description is listed on the application. It's located at 21357 US Highway 385. And he is requesting a new one. And then also during the renewals, he will be asking for the renewal. So this is just from now until they expire on June 30th, so he can get operations started. And then the new, the renewal will take effect on July 1st through June 30th of 2026. So, um, no. Yeah, all in one hearing, yes. We'll just, just keep, they're all scheduled for 8:25, so, yes. So we can just keep moving.
They're all one motion?
No, no, no. They'll all be a separate motion, yes.
Now at this time, it is the opportunity for anyone in the public online to comment at this time. Is there anyone in the body of the room that would like to speak for or against this? How about online? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing on, on that one, and we'll take action.
Move to approve.
Second. Has Brian been out to the new place?
Yes, I did speak with Pat just prior, and he said that everything has, that all of these are good.
Thank you. Okay, motion in second for approval, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next one, Brandon.
Okay. This one here is Trailhead. This is Nicole, or Nikki Archer has purchased Trailhead Lodge. And is, this here also is a, it's a transfer. So the license is being transferred into Nikki's name through the end of June 30th. And then also she will be listed on the renewals as well to take effect July 1st. So this is just getting the license transferred into her name, so she can operate from today going forward to June 30th.
Okay. Once again, we'll offer to the, to the public in the room or online at this time for any comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on that one and offer for the board.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion by Tinsdale, seconded by Jennings for approval, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
The legal hearing. But it's dumped me on there twice.
Next one is for Miracle Hannah. She is leasing the property from Big Mama's Beer Garden, which is Jan, uh, Cabarnum. So this here again is the same scenario as the prior one, transferring the license from Big Mama's Beer Garden to Miracle Hannah to operate through the end of June. And then again, also she will be on the renewals as well.
Okay, once again, public hearing, anyone in the body of the audience or online that would like to speak at this time for? Yes. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Flanagan, seconded by Jennings for approval, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Did we test this to make sure we can hear these people online?
I'm checking, and no one has said that they can't hear me, so.
Okay.
We have Greg online and Jesse and Amber and.
But can we hear them?
Yep.
I'm guessing no. That's why we're not hearing when the recording kicks on, is I don't think that's turned on.
That's, I don't know.
Renewal for another.
Okay, this here is the annual renewals for 2025, 2026. They, you receive the listing of all of them. I did check with the sheriff's office, everything is good. And we just need to, a motion to, if there is no public comment to approve them. I do, just for your information, everybody has paid their property taxes except for one, and we have spoken with that person, they fly in today, and will be here this afternoon to pay that. So we will not mail this one until those are paid. So other than that, everything is good.
Okay, let's go to the board.
Make a motion to approve with, under the conditions that were, were outlined by the auditor.
Yeah, public hearing, you have to have a public hearing.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry.
I just heard you say we don't have.
That's, that's what I heard too.
Public hearing again. Is there anyone in the room or online that would like to speak at this time? Please state your name and address for the record on the renewals of these licenses. Seeing none, all those, uh.
Not a motion.
To the board. Right.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion by Flanagan, seconded by Jennings for approval, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
I know, I'm sorry.
Mr. Bay, sir. Come on up, you have the floor, sir.
Good morning. To start off with, I have a utility permit. Mr. Noble from AE2S here representing Deer Mountain Sanitary, requesting to put in a manhole on one of our gravel roads. This is for the Deer Mountain Sanitary District. This is for a project that they started last year. This is to supply water to the, to their pump house. This is a, this is a project they've invested a lot of money into, the Deer Mountain Sanitary District has. This is just kind of the next step in there. They're gonna have to put this diversion valve in the existing 24-inch water main that feeds Lead and Deadwood. So I had some concerns with this because of a manhole and a gravel road isn't really the best combination. So they came up with some solutions, and that is to bury the manhole. It's a, it's, if all goes well, this will be something that doesn't need to be accessed. Yeah, it's just to access that if they have to do any work on it, so they are.
Why would it not be in the road ditch?
Because the existing water line is already in the road. It's been in the road for a number of years. This, this main water, we have representatives here, he could probably answer these questions better than I can, but, but the water line has been in this road for, for as long as I can remember.
Under, under.
It'd be better if it was in the road ditch. This diversion valve has to be in the water line as well. It can't be, it's not an offshoot of it. It has to, it has to slow the water down, I guess, for better purposes to get it into this, to their pump station. But I will let them answer these technical questions.
If, what's your recommendation? Are you comfortable with it now?
As long as it, I've, I've, I've put in my, for my conditions, you know, that, first of all, that they had a traffic control plan, because it's gonna require a total road closure again, which they did last year to install this, their, their pump station. They have, since I sent you guys your information, they have provided me with the traffic control plan. So I do have that. And then my other condition that I wanna, I wanna know for sure, that this, this manhole is at the depth that they say it will be. So before it's covered, I wanna, I wanna verification of the depth. Uh, they're proposing to have it 18 inches under the surface of the road. So with those two conditions, uh, and I guess of the timeframe, I mean, they're, I would again refer to them on the amount of time it's gonna take for this project. Inglewood Road is gonna be, you know, have to have a diversion. So I will give you copies of that traffic control plan before I leave. But, so I'm, I'm in, I would be in favor of this project, provided all of these conditions are met.
Okay, any board members have any questions or discussion? So I guess just the mechanics of the flow control valve, is it a manual valve or is it electronic? That, or is this something that you wouldn't have to be turning very often?
No, this is a physical structure. So we're physically putting a, the best way to maybe understand it is it's a sluice gate that is going inside of the pipe itself. So we're exposing the pipe. We have a six-foot-high sluice gate that actually builds pressure up as water forms up against the gate. The structure's high enough that, that once it's built up, it will cascade over the plate and then continue to serve water to Lead, Deadwood Sand District. But that will allow water to then build pressure up to divert water into our existing wet well.
Okay, so this is a standpipe, not a valve?
It's not a valve, no. It is, the best way to probably think about it is, is if you imagine like a sanitary sewer manhole, you, that you would see like a water flow through it, but we're gonna put a physical gate barrier to build up pressure to push water into our wet well. This has all been approved, uh, this design has been approved by the Deadwood Sand District. So we got that approval prior to coming to you guys. So they have approved of this design, uh, but we're just not seeking your guys' approval to actually install this. And as mentioned before, it physically has to be in the water main itself. Um, and unfortunately, where that main resides, where our project needs it to be, just so happens to be in the.
In one way.
Any further questions? Moving, follow recommendations. Motion, seconded by Tinsdale, to follow recommendations for approval, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Um, the next utility permit is for, uh. Keating Resources is requesting, uh. Permission to bore underneath the Terry Summit Road in a, in a third location. This is to install a six-inch water lane, water lane within a 12-inch casing to supply water to the west side of this Deer, Deer Mountain Village project. I did put the conditions at the bore pits, must be at the outer limits of the rightway, and no digging will be allowed in the road at the road's edge. We did have some issues at the last water line they put in, that they actually potholed in the middle of our road.
You gotta approve.
They have, so I would recommend that we allow this utility permit as well.
Moving to follow superintendent's recommendation. Second. Okay, little motion in a second for follow, have we superintendent's recommendations of approval and improve the discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried.
I'm still kinda working on the approach permit for the same area for Keating Resources. I'm, I, I haven't really got all of the answers yet that I need for this, so I'm, I'm gonna recommend that we at least continue this approach permit for that. They, it's short of site distance where they wanna put it. I'm not really sure how much, how big a lots this is gonna serve. It's for this lot that was replatted recently, that's a one-acre lot, but it's just not in the best place. If it's gonna service more property, I think we need to try to find a different location for it. So I'm still waiting to hear from them, but I would just assume continue this until a later date.
Senator Driver, would you like to add to this?
Yeah, if I would. This approach is for one lot, there's no other platted lots in that area.
Is there any future platted lots gonna be in that area? Can it be moved 25 feet further to the north?
I don't see why not. You recommend that's where it goes, that's where the.
I have, I haven't, I haven't got much response from Sean there that, that submitted the application, so.
And I wasn't up there, obviously, but that's the only lot that's been approved in that area on the preliminary plat and the PUD and the infrastructure. But I don't think 25 feet is any big deal.
It would get us within the, the limits of site distance. And you have to push us over the edge.
You have to put a lot of fill in there anyway.
It's gonna have to have a lot of fill.
Yeah.
Correct.
You wanna wait for further recommendation?
Um, if those conditions are met, I, I would be fine with it. So I would leave that to you guys if you wanna wait to a further reading.
I'm move to follow recommendation, including moving the.
And that it'd be only a driveway, service only one lot?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, and we're looking by Tinsdale, seconded by Flanagan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried.
We have the bike races are, um, for the, the next, this year. I do have all documents, this is from Perry Jewett. This is for the Pine Island Bike Race and also the Dakota Five-O Bike Race. In the packet, you have all of the maps of the route. They have supplied the insurance information with their applications. So everything is pretty much the same as it was for the last couple of years. So I, I would recommend that we approve these MOUs for these bike events.
Move to follow recommendation.
Thank, second.
Okay, motion by Flanagan, seconded by Sleet. Got any further discussion?
So I'm, I'm curious, did they also have to get a permit from the city or who's in control of Hill Street at this point?
I didn't look at the.
They have several city routes and state routes on there. That would be up to them to get those permits from those entities for their, their roads. I mean, we have a portion of Hill Street in the county, and they have a portion of Hill Street in the city.
And so I thought, was there some confusion about who controls the portion of Hill Street?
On check with Kyle, and Kyle would assert that the original resolution included the part that we've been talking about, the part in controversy. John Bay might, might disagree with that.
Well, I, I did disagree with that at first, but now after reading that, uh, it was pointed out that that portion is included in that resolution that was sent to the state, which I did not, I did not know that was included.
But the resolution is still sitting on Larry Dean's desk, subject to approval, so the extra transfer has not occurred yet.
Okay, that was my question. So we are in jurisdiction, for sure jurisdiction of this street?
I would think that's probably a fair assumption, yeah.
That portion of it.
That portion. I wanna make sure that we're expecting on their toes like they're expecting on ours.
Still have our motion for approval, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Um, the bridge contracts you did sign this morning, so those are ready to go. Um, I do have a, something I'd like to bring to your attention. I don't know if you've heard it from anybody in the public or not. I have heard, I've had three incidents reported to me where the, where the, the road at the intersection of Crook City and Our Road, and I guess the, the, the Three Peaks Development, I don't know if that's technically the name of that section of section line road that was approved for that development. It is creating an issue with, uh, people are just driving across Crook City into that section line road and unaware that the traffic that is northbound is, does not stop. So we have placed stop signs at those intersection, intersecting roads onto Crook City. I'm trying to not make it a four-way stop, I don't wanna go that route first. I, I just wanted to bring to your guys' attention that we're gonna have to do some kind of signing there because we have a real potential hazard, I think, here, having a head-on collision. Some of the options, I guess, we might be looking at maybe putting some, you know, reducing speed through that section, I don't know. We're also gonna, I've reached out to the South Dakota LTAF and the local gov for assistance on what, what signing to put on the main road to warn people that, you know, oncoming traffic or northbound traffic, you know, does not stop, you know? So I have not heard back from either of those entities yet, so when I do, I will let you know. I just wanted you guys to be aware of it. So if you get any phone calls or whatever, you know that we're at least kinda working on it.
All right, thank you.
And if you have any suggestions, I'd certainly be open to that as well.
Sounds like you're depressed at all.
Trying. We have our sale published in the paper, and it's gonna happen in two weeks. Will be the, the end of our Purple Wave auction, so if there's, if you guys want any signs, now's your chance.
Online auction.
Online auction, Purple Wave. To, to, as of this morning, it's, I think our total is at $6,845. So.
Just on the signs?
Well, that's signs, we have those two pickup trucks and that one with dump trucks. So our 1998 GMC is the one that's bringing the most interest. It's at 3100 bucks, so.
All right.
Nice.
Um, I don't have anything else for you guys, if you have anything for me, let me know.
I received a letter from a homeowner there on the Old Bell Gate concerning their crashes on the stop sign or on the mailbox. That corner, it's a pretty tough corner. They expressed the concern that, that people were speeding through there. Just in the, in the interest of science, sir, I took that corner at 55 miles an hour with my car, and it's, you gotta hang on to the steering wheel back that corner.
How fast did you go?
At 55.
Which was the speed limit for that?
Which was the speed limit. So I don't know if we, if there's any other signage. There's a squiggly curve sign there now and a recommendation of 45. Curve sign there now and a recommendation of forty-five. Uh, people aren't taking that seriously. It's it's a problem from from both from the south and from the north when you go around the other way too.
There are Chevrons there as well, aren't there? That marked the corner?
Yeah, they mowed right over it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Flattered off a dangerous curve sign would help instead to get people's attention. Um, I I don't know.
We could look into some signing and again, I mean, this is an area that we've, we did some speed reduction to the south um recently. You know, we could look into doing something more with speed limits, I guess. Um. Of course, I, you know, that would be your guys' responsibility to do speeds.
In favor of, just because that's only good if you enforce it.
Correct.
I just thought maybe some if there's a more appropriate signing that would help.
We could do some uh probably some sign changing, you know, the the problem with. The more signs you put up, the more they get ignored. I know that sounds a little goofy, but that's that's there's been a lot of studies put forward on that information. And uh, that's right. People become real complacent the more signs you put up, so it's kind of an overload.
That letter?
Yeah, yeah.
But we can certainly look into it. Well, I mean. You can't fix everything or everybody when it comes to drivers. I mean, you can put all of the safety uh. In place and it doesn't mean they're not gonna still have an accident, but we can certainly look into that.
Like the last one was maybe a distracted driving.
Well, we will. We'll, I'll look at some signing there and and we'll see what's in place and what we maybe replace it with.
And also I had another question about the tenant road funding. Apparently that we've made some advancements on getting funding through the Forest Service. Uh, but what agreements need to be taken care of?
We haven't got any yet.
We have not gotten any agreement yet. I was in contact with the Forest Service last week and. As everybody I think now knows that, you know, Mr. Cossel is retired. But they had four people that are no longer with the Forest Service. It's kind of put everything into kind of a setback there. Uh, we did get a. We did get an email uh from one of their uh. Property people saying that, you know, they are, the funds have been released, but they're they're not really available yet, so. I guess we're still waiting, but as far as the agreement in place, we just need a maintenance, a road maintenance agreement for. You know, either ten road or the road, the list of roads they have or or our list, whatever we want to really put in there, but. We're waiting on that for them. We don't have any agreements in place at this time.
Um, I think, John, you provided them with all the information that they wanted and we also added some language. Uh, about third-party interpretation of the agreement and so forth, right?
So we. We've given them our list of roads and then your your language, Bruce, that you for the third party in there, but I've not seen any. Anything back from the Forest Service since we give the those documents to them.
I guess I'm I'm unaware that we are causing any kind of a holdup.
I don't think we are. Um, it came to me after we did the motion. Is there any kind of, I know, I I'm assuming that the the work on that in the road uh right away or inside the road is being done by the water district? Is that correct? It would be the Deer Mountain Sanitary District. Okay, so it's a governmental entity. My 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 question is if if something happens and let's say that, God forbid, that vault fail that has a valve in it and the road has a big. Sinkhole in it. Do we have any guarantees that they'll get it fixed? I mean, the only guarantee would be our ordinance, you know, it's in our ordinance that they have to. And I'm not sure that having another governmental body bond for that would make any sense, but hopefully they have a. They would be their own. They are their own governing entity there, so um I know that they haven't gone to bid for that project yet. They're waiting for this. This uh permit so they can go to bid for this project.
So they would be the ones possibly giving the bond?
Yeah.
Okay, anything further? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Have a great rest of your day.
Yeah, we'll take another five minute break.
Yeah, hold on.
This. Ryan from Heavy is here. He he's a. Doing the permits for Celerity and. He reached out to me here just the other day, want to know if he could come here and address you guys. Sorry, I forgot, I guess, sitting right there. Apologize for any.
Thank you for fixing my fins.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you for following us.
Yeah.
Yes. Apologize for any inconveniences caused over the last six months or so, or however long it's been. Think a lot of these issues were probably winter work made. Probably maybe should not have performed it in the winter. Um, a lot of them are due to rock too, I guess. I have invested about a half million bucks into some new rock machinery that keeps processes cleaner. Uh, we have used it this year a little bit and it's going very well. Um. I guess right now we're working in Belle Fuge and we've gotten about forty miles done this year yet. And most of my remaining permits are with you guys. I have probably about eight in John's bucket right now. As of now, I probably have. Two to three weeks worth of work left, otherwise I'll be running out if I don't get any permits. Um. I think our cleanup processes and things in Belle Fuge are going a lot better.
Not too much rock.
Not too much rock. You know, and I I know we've had some issues in Spearfish, but I think we've done a pretty good job of responding to homeowners requests often the next day or. Whatever it may be, we've called in probably a couple hundred tons of base course for private roads and such and. Just uh want to apologize and hopefully have a good working relationship moving forward, so.
Alright, thank you.
So I do have, like I said, about six or eight permits in John's bucket, I guess, that I would hope would get approved next meeting if possible, so. So.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll take our five minute break unless you get ready to enter.
I think Bruce is gonna have to break because. I was listening upstairs and there was a couple that was trying to talk, but I don't think you guys could hear him.
That's what I was afraid of.
There was one. Well, I don't. I I it was a, it was, it was a. It was, they was on the baller and it just said caller. I could see him and I could hear him.
I could see it light up green.
Yeah.
Is it, was it on?
Well, they, no, it wasn't on. It was somebody else. They hung up now because the, I heard him say, well, this isn't working or something and then. They hung up and I, but I couldn't say anything to him. I I tried to just say, hey, there, you know, I can like, no, they're very.
Well, yeah, I saw it light up green like they were trying to talk. So that's what I mentioned that Bruce.
Well, that's.
I thought I gave them plenty of time.
Yeah, and I think they they tried.
See, that's. And that's why I fear with this thing that that they try, that if we're gonna have a public hearing and we make this option, we have to be able to hear them.
Yeah.
It has to work. Otherwise we shouldn't have.
It's still really odd that I could, I mean, I'm on, because I'm on the same link that they are.
It's because the stereo isn't on. Whatever the thing is, well, okay, it's because the speakers in this room are not making any sound. And it's, it's not a big deal. It just is what it is.
I was upstairs, there was a couple on that was trying to talk. I could hear them, but these guys.
Are they talking now?
No, they're.
We're not getting any volume out of these speakers.
They're not on at all.
Is the, is the input correct or the?
I am, this is. Okay.
I'm sure glad you guys are enjoying it.
It's supposed to go private.
Amy, if you can hear me, can you unmute yourself and talk?
Amy is in with Colton, so she should not pay any attention.
Yeah, she's trying to talk.
Did you hear me?
I think we have hers.
Oh, there's something. Oh, I'm used to those.
Were you trying to talk? No, we can't hear anything. Can you, does Jesse have? Okay. But just nothing's coming through when you're. Because when you guys turn your speakers on, it goes green, but we can't hear you at all. So that's. Okay. Same thing. Okay, that's all I was wondering. Thank you. Bye. Yep, same thing. So Jesse and Amy were trying to talk just now. And Bruce, you did that thing on your ear like I had to.
Where are we?
Alright, sure, because this was on the phone. I'll reset here. Um, and this, this was set to, it's connected here, but your audio output was set to speakers not um. Not the hit, not the.
So I don't know what's into the same thing, so. What on Thursday? We'll have to do it, yeah. That's the same thing. We got it last time, but. Amy, can you test it now?
Bruce isn't working. Can you hear me?
Jesse or Amy, can you test it now?
Yeah, if you can't hear me, then it's still not working.
Oh, nope, we got it now. Thank you.
I don't think people that were on.
It wasn't on, yeah, it was somebody, he was just there listening. And. They didn't like seem upset or anything, just that they listened that it got approved and then they shut it down.
If you can hear me, I'm just letting you know that you are muted.
Are you gone?
Like we should be good jumping.
All right. It is 9:00 AM and this is the second reading for the, uh, changes zoning number three sixty-six. We did have the public hearing last meeting and we closed it, so it's up to the board for discussion approval.
Nothing has changed, um, A1 to A2, right outside of city limits of Spearfish. It is directly adjacent on Johnson Lane. Meets all with requirements and it's in our Highway eighty-five corridor plan because it's right along that corridor. Flat and everything will have to go through the city Spearfish because it is, you know, right close to city limits there.
Sorry, sorry.
It's on Highway eighty-five, so like Johnson Lane and just right over.
In this property.
Yes, it's directly adjacent to city. So it's one whole property. It's all city limits.
Coming changes to A2. I know the discussion I've read, the fact that they want more agricultural land or agricultural land and hills left alone. At your meeting.
A2 is what they had wanted, what the property owner asked for.
That'll go with ten acre.
Yep.
But A2 just means that, uh, it developed on the, uh, further as in the next step.
Not necessarily. We have a lot of A2 property that they've just done ten acre average. That's what he's planning on doing, ten acre lots.
No, that's what you're gonna do right now. And all these. I must have understood it right. That's what. Uh, the top answer plan you said they didn't want.
This is in that corridor that, and they, they're encouraging development on eighty-five there. Originally, when I looked at it, I thought it was the one down in the, in the valley there. So that one was not going to affect this.
Still up on the floor.
Yeah.
Oh, she's a group.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Tisdale, seconded by Jennings for approval. Any further discussion?
Uh, just, uh, I'll just add that I'm certainly supportive of eating lands and agriculture, but this is a, a spot that, uh, adjacent to the city. Uh, it's an area that's, that's already partially developed there to the south. And, uh, as we look at growth in the county, uh, what we've tried to do is, or advocate for, is to have that start from the city and move out. And this is an appropriate spot for that to happen.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. Follow us in favor of the motion before us. We'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And Jason Ward is online. I don't know if you have any.
Well, it's already.
Jason, it's been approved. We were having some issues earlier, so hopefully it worked, but.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Extension of memorandum, understanding what three books it needs. That's on my list. Yes.
That'd be probably true now.
I don't know. Did Bruce give you the original? He had it.
So I'm not sure. It's a few words.
Okay. Um, so this is an extension. A new MOA and then the letter of credit I know was not in your packet. Bruce is aware of this, and so I know Bruce is comfortable with you guys approving the letter of credit with, I'm sorry, approving the memorandum of agreement with the condition that we get the letter of credit. Um, we did get an email yesterday from Tim Guzzo with, um, First Interstate Bank locally. They're switching banks basically from an out-of-state bank to, to First Interstate in Spearfish. And he said, um, I continue to diligently work on the irrevocable letter of credit requested for the MOA. We have been discussing, however, it's going to take a bit of time to put together the full letter of credit as requested. Um, I do not anticipate any issues as we currently have the funds available in three hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty, which matches the MOA, um, for the completion of the booster station. I hope to have the letter of credit within the next five days, but it's like the actual piece of paper. So normally we have that first, but they're just having, this is taking longer. So he asked if you could do that. And we have this letter to go with it. Bruce was comfortable with it. And he would just make it a condition that that letter of credit comes in. Because you don't sign the letter of credit. You only sign the, the MOA. The letter of credit, we just hold.
We would make sure that it matches the.
Sorry. And the, the MOA matches the amount that he specified in here, which was three forty-three eight fifty.
Motion to follow. Recommendation with the condition.
Second. Motion by Flanagan, seconded by Tisdale for approval. With added language, so further discussion.
But can we, is there anything that we, is there a project that we can hold up until we get the letter or?
Well, we, we won't approve it until we have the letter. That's why we conditionally do the MOA.
Right, and so there's.
Yep, so they, they, and they don't really, they're kind of just in holding right now anyways, I would say. I mean, wouldn't you agree, Randy? Do you know anything about this? I know that.
Well, I know some about it.
A little bit. But we just have to wait on that letter of credit.
The reason of the delay of the letter of credit was because the money's already there and the bank didn't quite know how to handle that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I've seen one from, from Gussel or from First Interstate yet. Usually we get out-of-state banks.
Mr. Chairman, it is an escrow account, but of course, that's not a convenient way for us to get the money. So they're gonna have to convert it to a letter of credit. I'm not sure how familiar they are with doing that. So that's the process of TJ getting into the letter of credit or some other kind of form other than an escrow. So, so why are we in need of doing it at this meeting instead of waiting until the next meeting until they have the paperwork done?
Because it'll be in before you have it. That was really, I think, is the old.
It's, it's true. You could put it off until your next meeting. Um, I think in the past you have done a conditional approval. And I, I, I have every expectation that it'll be produced during the next week or so. But you're absolutely correct. It could be put off.
Okay, we have a motion for acceptance on the floor for approval with the conditions. Any further discussion?
They didn't have a recommendation to wait till next meeting though, did they?
No, that wasn't the motion. So we can. Go up or down. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks.
So. Two. Yes, probably. Okay. When the local call please on, on the motion of approval.
Jennings.
Aye.
Tisdale.
Aye.
Sleep.
Aye.
Flanagan.
Aye.
Ewing.
Aye.
Three, two.
It sounds like we got good confidence of the document here, so. All right, this has been approved. And what's your next one?
Just want to think about it. We've signed us some, I guess. We're on the flat. Thought it worked well. It's got his signature.
Yeah, that actually.
Twenty twenty-five, twenty-one. Um, this one is lots one oh one, block B of Deer Mountain Village. Here's the final map for about that. That's it. Randy's here. If you have any questions or concerns with the plat, but the plat meets the requirements. Um, we do have. And recommendation is to approve it, matches the preliminary plat with the condition. Prior to recording, we get the fire plan letter. Um, we're still, did we get it? Okay.
It's.
Sorry. So we got the fire plan letter and that was based off of finding and zoning. We didn't quite have it yet, so they just did a conditional approval. But if we got it, then we're good. Perfect.
Okay. I'll move to approve the file. Second. Okay, I have a motion by Jennings, seconded by Tisdale for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing them, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
This one, um, I guess Amy's kind of been talking to you guys about how she was going to do the ASVILs to kind of save on paper. So we do have a full copy of the ASVILs, um, if you need that, if you want to look at it and all, but some of you guys have already seen it.
And this is on the.
This is on the Kisek Water and Oil Service one.
And they're, they're intended.
Yep, they're here. So basically, they're just doing their final plat on lots one through seven. Um, it's the same as what was presented for the preliminary. If you remember, we went rounds on this one for quite a while. Um, they did end up decreasing the number of lots overall and then doing the road option that worked better for the layout and stuff in there. Um, looks pretty good. We didn't have anything, um, we, approval of the final plat matches the preliminary plan with the condition that the WDI Energy Agreement Transition Pipeline Easement Document and Road Maintenance Agreement be done at the same time as the, so we need to fill in some, some numbers, but I think that's all gotten done. So from what I understand, correct? Um, and then John Bay had been out there to look at the, you know, he looked at the ASVILs and all of that. Um, and I believe he provided you a kind of his little write-off like he has been doing on those. I think it looked good. I don't think he had any concerns, not from what I gathered on his report.
Yeah, this is A2 again. Is that right?
Um. I think so. I don't know off the top of my head, is it A2?
Yes.
Yes, it's A2. Yep. So it was eight acres, eight to ten acre average.
Of which we've already approved.
Yep, it was, it was done a long time ago when you did this changes zoning. So this is just the plat for it. So I don't know the changes on this, three, four years ago now, I think, probably.
Yeah.
Okay, it's up to the board. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Tisdale, seconded by Flanagan for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing them, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Great, thank you.
Well, I mean, votes don't count.
Out of jurisdiction.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Bruce, will you sneak out there and see if Kinders or Skeets are here?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Can't see.
I know.
You're hiding, okay.
Kind of tied in here.
That's all right. Just making sure you're here. All right, next one. Um, this is the property, this is lots one through twelve of Newly Hill Subdivision. And if you know where this is, it's the Newly Hill Lodge. They had a conditional, have a conditional use coming out there for the lodge. Um, they bought property over the years around that lodge. Um, and now they are looking at doing a subdivision out of the remainder of that property and more than likely selling everything off. Um, there, it, this is kind of a weird thing because there was a lot of existing lots already in there. But they've kind of moved lot lines around, plus added a couple of new lots. Overall, the density requirements, um, are allowable on what they're trying to do. This would be a remainder of the, they're, they're plating everything. Roadwise, they've provided, um, plans for it. They have a fire mitigation in there. Um, water, all of that stuff. They're just trying to, to move forward with their preliminary. Um, the ASVILs. John did a report. You guys should have that already. He did a report on them. So he went out and checked them out. And then basically, so that it kind of matched up with, with what they want to build. And then they'll go finish, you know, from this point before they come in for a final plat, they'll have to finish the roads. And then John will do a final review of it. But everything looked pretty good. Um, I believe, did this get approved yet for County Commission? You know, change to that easement, you know, Bruce? Do you remember? That easement was being moved. I don't remember. His County Commission was looking at the easement too. I don't know if it was or not.
I still haven't got the signature from the neighbor.
Okay, you're still working with them. So what they're gonna do, and you see it on this preliminary, that's why they're showing kind of this dark area in here. They're working with the neighbor down here, and I think he sent a letter at one point. You guys had a letter on this. Um, there's an old forty foot, not even quite forty, easement that ran right along the building that sits there. And then it goes down. And then there's a little tiny piece where it's forty feet right here in the corner. And it was access to this person. That person was originally just, he was worried that if they moved it or changed this existing easement, he didn't want to lose access. Well, they're not. They're just moving the easement over. So it's just moving it away from that building a little bit. Um, so this just shows the existing easement and then where that new easement is.
Have they submitted the fire plan?
Yep, they've, they've submitted everything. So we're just in the preliminary plat base. So now they'll have time between now and the final to finish, you know, their roads, their water, their, their, uh, fire plan stuff. But the plan itself is, there's actually not going to be much work to do on this property. Yep, it's pretty open. Um, and then they have a lot of existing infrastructure. That's why you see that on all these existing lots.
Please, you're in the board. Move to approve the preliminary. Second. Okay, motion by Jennings, seconded by Tisdale to approve the preliminary. Any further discussion? Seeing them, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, guys. So for, for now, you guys go forward and ready, when you're done with the roads totally. Because we just have to have John come back out and look at.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. More discussion, action, review and approval of Bill Colburn as a wildfire mitigation contractor.
Well, you guys know Bill. I think you know him. So interestingly enough, Bill was one of the reasons why we have a fire plan in the first place. And then it's just taken him a while to decide he wants to write plan. Um, so what we did is we had him go through the, the normal, just like we do with everybody else, had to write his letter. He put that all together. Now, his is a little bit different because normally we would have, um, copies of all of the certificates. But some of Bill's certificates are quite old. And they don't make them that way, so we had to just do a transcript, which is fine. Um, we've done that before, but they just, they did it differently back, what in, what do we decide?
Nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty.
So they're still chiselled on a wall?
Yeah. So I had to make it work to find a proof of the requirements, but I think it meets everything. We have copies of everything and then we just had to do a copy of the transcript showing the classes from, from before. Um, obviously, you know, we thought it fights wildfires, so.
This is the only scenario that John Maddox does work.
Yep, yep. He would be able to continue to write plans. We did have another one, um, that kind of did something similar where, remember, we added in the verbiage that if it doesn't match exactly, you can choose or ask questions if you think that he meets the requirements or not. And so that's what we put it under because he can provide most everything.
Didn't Tim Eggers do that with the?
Yeah, yep. So we have everything in order. If somebody would ask, we could at least say that, yep, here's the letter and here's his.
You need more, more help than Rob Maddox provides.
Um, well, it's a private individual chooses who they want to pick. We don't have anything to do with it.
It's like asking if there's enough people that put in septic tanks.
Yeah.
If you want to be a septic tank installer, get certified, then put your name.
Yep, pretty much.
I guess. More is better, in my opinion, the more we, more people that are qualified to do it, I think, where they get a better service. You might be able to get it done sooner. Something, for a while there, it was taking months to get somebody to do anything.
I think we only have three right now, four, four that are approved by you guys. And I think they all do stuff. I mean, I don't, they're all working with different groups of people.
So you need more than four.
I don't need any of them, but you guys require it, yeah.
Ready? Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. How many surveyors do we have? As many as have become licensed to meet the qualifications. How many engineers do we have? As many as meet the qualifications and can pass the exams. So the public has a chance to go do business whoever they want. It's, it's enterprise. Right now, one of the, one of the people works for another firm which competes with the other firms. That's not exactly fair. So the more, the merrier, because then the public can choose who they want to come and do it. So it's enterprise. And if you want to limit the number of surveyors, the number of engineers, it's up to you, but, but that, we certainly don't want to do that. And, and I wanted to talk to Bill about Bill a little bit. Bill is on the ground getting what's done for all these people. So they write them. He goes and gets them done and they come and inspect them. So he's down there doing the work. So it's a little silly not to have him qualify.
Okay. Further discussion, right? I'll move to approve Bill Colburn as a wildlife mitigation contractor.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Jennings and seconded by Mr. Flanagan for approval. Of, uh, Mr. Probert going. Any further discussion? Seeing them, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
So Bill, am I adding your, we need to know what information you want added to the list? Just the one that you sent us with like your cell phone number and stuff, you want all of that on the list?
Yeah, I'll visit with, yeah.
Okay, just so we know how to.
Yeah.
Have people.
That doesn't look like fun.
All right, thank you.
Trust me, it's not.
All right, Ms. Deb Tridle, we are down to you, Reserve Sailor, Lieutenant, Sir Jimmy.
Yeah. Sorry, this is late getting to you. I just. Down that way. Somebody to go down that way. Isn't that enough down there? Okay, so for the past, um, two tax seasons, we have not sold delinquent taxes, tax certificates in December because of all the issues with the law that they had to get cleaned up and stuff. It's pretty much been cleaned up. And then this past legislative session, they also cleaned up the part that protects the county for any liens that are held against the county so that if somebody goes to, to sell it or something, that lien stays on there until it's cleaned up. So that's one good thing. But right now, as you can see, before we quit selling them, I was down to like a couple thousand dollars. And now, um, from fifteen to twenty-one, I have nineteen hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty cents in delinquencies. Then twenty-two, sale. Um, I'm down to sixty-five thousand seven twelve ninety-four. And for twenty-three, we're still sitting at three hundred and forty-nine thousand seven seventy-five twenty-seven. So we're back up to four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in delinquent taxes again. Uh, Pennington County is selling their tax certificates now, and I believe Brookings is too. So I'm asking if you guys want to go back to having me sell in the tax certificates?
I'm certain that you could.
Um, I, I would suggest we start June first. Um, that way I can get it out on my, um, webpage and stuff and let people know. I, I have had people calling and asking if we're doing them or not.
I don't remember that we, that we necessarily did a vote to not, to discontinue. I think you came in with a recommendation. I don't know that we.
Um, back on, uh, September twenty-sixth of twenty twenty, twenty-three, we had to rescind the resolution giving me permission to sell them.
Okay.
So now we gotta.
So we have, do we have a. To, okay, I'll make a motion to rescind the motion or the.
Reestablish.
Yeah. What, however, we want to do that verbiage. Actually, I was the one that, that made the motion to rescind the resolution two thousand seven dash twenty-three.
And here's what you want to.
And Commissioner Ewing seconded that one. So can we just go there? Would that be the easiest one, just to do what we did and undo it?
Uh, well, I would say maybe, uh, just reauthorize the, the seller of them consistent with resolution two thousand seven dash twenty-three.
So moved.
As of June first.
Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Flanagan, seconded by Mr. Sleep. You should have the language here. We understand what we're about on. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Chairman. Deb, will you have another sale like in December like you normally do?
Yes, then I will start. Right now, if anybody wanted me to come in, I would reassign the tax certificates to them so they can come and pick up whatever I have on the books. And then, um, they could move forward with that. And then this coming December, I would have a tax certificate sell for anything going new forward.
I, I think the Sheriff's Office did a really good job of getting the distress warrant served and collecting it today.
Yes.
And that was, that's a kind of a consequence of the tax, not any tax bill.
No, uh, distress warrants are always issued no matter what because on mobile homes, I cannot put a tax certificate on them. And the guys did a really good job. We finished up our last one. Monday, wasn't it? Yes, Monday. So that one is taken care of.
There was like fifty or someone, okay?
Yeah, we, yeah, we had a little over fifty of them we had to, to do. And the, the guys worked really hard and we have them all taken care of. And we did not have to sell any of them.
Good. Also had a personnel issue you wanted to discuss, Deb?
Yeah, I've talked with a couple of different ones. And then Eric asked me to put together what I have spent in overtime um, since January. And so I. And so I put, kind of put this together a little bit. We've, we've been super busy. And it's not only just the new motor V system, but I physically paid out in overtime costs. Because some of the girls are maxed out on vacation and the comp, they just can't use it. So we, I have physically picked, paid out $4,818.09 in overtime wages. Comp time that's on the books right now that we would be obligated to pay is up to $1,001,4994. And Jan, who was my part-time person, she retired, retired on me. They moved to Rapid, so I've lost her, but before she left, she worked 160 hours, which was $4,549.56. And out of the budgeted hours, I still have 240 hours left that was budgeted for her slot. And I don't have an exact hours, but I kind of rounded it up, and since January, I probably put in about 190 hours of extra time. And this is what we have sitting. We've been really good. Just up until last week, we were up to 375 titles in the office pending. Either they were, these are the ones we have not worked yet. These are the ones that have come in the mail. These ones were just yesterday. So we check them in because we have so many coming in that we had to do an Excel spreadsheet. So we check them in, that they're either, they're coming in from a dealer or a bank, so we call the people and tell them we have them here, so we know they're in here. Their ATVs, motorcycles, they're going to Lori if they're out of country, which we get a lot of out of country now coming from Japan. Sally's our queen on that, and Lisa's, so we know where they're at, but we keep a track because people are calling. You got my title yesterday in the mail, I see it. Why isn't it worked? I kid you not. So we have an Excel spreadsheet. We're up to 375, and I'm down to 195 right now between all of this. And this is just what's coming in the mail here to do title transfers. Then we still have all the ones that come in the mail to re-register. That we do those every day. We get liens in that we have to put on, that come in that the banks need liens on. If any of the dealers send in that are going to their name, they're called past titles, we have to do them immediately. Plus then we have all the people at the counter, and then we have phone calls. And Greg was able to pull this. Since January, just in my office, these are calls coming in and going out. We've had 16,885 calls in my office. 16,000? 16,885. And that does not include emails, because, excuse me, we have a lot of people calling, emailing, ATVs doing this. One morning I came in, luckily I came in on a Sunday to do it, I had 140 emails to answer.
Can you have an extra desk in that office for another person?
Yes, we do.
Kind of sounds like that's where this is headed. I mean, overtime's not good, and where are people at's not good.
No, yeah, it's, and what we found out too, talking, and hopefully I go to workshop. We leave here shortly. Hopefully, the 605, some of it is going to get better, but visiting with Eric on one of the things, it's going to get, it's going to be a handful for at least the next year, because like trailers, when they come over, not all of them converted right, so now you have five trailers, you come in to license them. I have to ask you, what's the make on your trailer? The makes didn't come over. We have to go enter all the makes in. And that's, there's no fix for it. We have to physically do it. ATVs, some of the older ones that were on the, the system, it didn't put in the gas. It's something we can't do, because all vehicles you have to save is gas, diesel, whatever. We can't fix it. It's dead in the water. So we have to either put a ticket in or call peer, and if we can get them to do it right away, we can do it. If not, we have to wait until they fix it. I had one that took them three weeks before they could get it fixed, so we could not license that person, so we had the paperwork sitting there. And then Brenda and I spun things, refunds. It has been a bookkeeping nightmare at the end of the month, because now peer, before they'd put correspondence letters out, we'd pull them, we'd work them. Now, if they think somebody has money coming back, they just automatically put them out there. And they take it off of our stuff, and we have to go in there and work it every day. So I have one girl every day looking at refunds so that we can balance out at the end of the month, and it's been a bookkeeping nightmare. And Brenda can attest to that.
Deb, Senator's here too. Is 100% of what you described owing to the 605 conversion?
On the spot. Yes. And I, I will, I can't totally bash the whole system, because there's some really good things to it. There's one part of it that it hits the, the federal system, where if you bring in a title and we put that number in there, it'll say, whoa, there's another title that's been issued after that. You, you've come from another state, you've asked for a duplicate, and you bring the wrong title in. Or it'll say, oh, the mileage is the wrong, or, oh, there's a problem with this, stop, don't do it. So that's good. That's, there's some really good parts to it. It's just that they've got a lot of bugs to it, and it's going to take a good year for us to get through. Every customer coming through and finding all the errors and fixing them. And we're coming up to a busy season with ATVs. We've already started having coming to the doors. And we've found that there's a few of the counties surrounding us that have just decided 605 is too much for them. They won't do ATVs, they will not do out-of-staters and stuff, and they're saying, oh, Lawrence County, because they're really nice.
They're sending it to you.
Yes, yeah. And, yeah, so we, we're, we're hoping to get this down, but this pile's going to get a little bigger, because next week I had two people on vacation. And unfortunately, I have an employee that's having to take a family member back and forth to Mayo Clinic, and that's on an on-call situation. And we got notified, they got to go back again next week, so I'll be down three people for three or four days. And that's just going to happen throughout the summer, because I have a second one that has to take another one to Mayo Clinic. So we're just flying by the seat of our pants.
Are you asking for a three-quarter time person or full-time person?
I was thinking full-time. And I'll be honest with you, if we, down the road, if we get doing better, where we're bored and we don't have enough to do, there are four of us that are over in our 60s.
That are, that are of an age that.
And then of an age that, down the road, that there's going to be some people probably retiring out of my office. And if we're, then we can say, okay, let's not replace that position.
Need help right now?
Yeah, I do.
Gentlemen.
Motion to allow the treasurer to advertise for a full-time, new full-time person?
Okay.
Second. Okay, motion by Flanagan, seconded by Jennings to allow for another full-time in the treasurer's office. Any further discussion?
I'll just add that I, I brought this issue up with, with Mrs. Tridle, just on a state call. Learning about all the problems, the problems of the 605 drive is certainly not unique to Lawrence County. All 66 counties are having those issues. And just, you know, the amount of work that the treasurer's office does, just the slightest little hiccup just starts backing things up, and, and that's what's happened. There's, there's going to be wait lines at, at the windows. It's putting a lot of stress on, on the staff. They're not able to take a lunch hour, they have to work through lunch hours, they're having to stay late, they're coming in on weekends. And, and I fear that if that pace continues, that we're going to start to lose staff. I would much rather hire a new one now than have to replace somebody.
And I've got some good ones. And the other thing that's going to be coming up in next year is with the governor opening up the elderly tax freeze this year.
Okay, let's finish our.
Okay. Oh, sorry about that.
In a second here, let's, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Thank you, thank you guys. I really appreciate it. But the elderly tax freeze this year, I had 218. But we have to go through tons of stuff to approve those. I do that, and I have another person to help me, but I had 54 I had to deny. And I send a letter, go through all their stuff, and then I had 26 that we had to go through and find out that they were off the system because they sold and stuff. Well, with the governor opening up what he did next year, it's going to be more, because he's made it where you can, the, the, the assessment value has gone up way more, and the income guideline has come up way more. So we're going to have a lot more people coming in on that. And more work, because it's also a five-year thing, so we're going to have to do research to see how long they own their house. So this, having another person is really going to help with that too. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, I know these gals want to get on the road to get prepared. Next item is from, items from the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak there? Okay, Randy?
I thought we were asking.
Randy Dibert, 1715 Scott Avenue, west of Spearfish World, Lawrence County. Three things. The 605 drives, as you called me out on, anytime you give a government agency over $20 million to update their system, there's hiccups. The good news is the revenue that we generate in that office, per person in the county is just amazing, and it funds a lot of that office. We are in the top three in, in the state on how much revenue we generate in that office. So that's, that's really good for us. Secondly, on the statute, I wanted to mention on the statute, on the tax deeds. There's parts of the statute that you didn't talk about. We don't have it often here, but if you have a parcel in town that you take on a tax deed, and you have to shovel the snow on the sidewalk or mow the lawn, you can now get those expenses reimbursed. And that's part of that statute. So if you have a county property that needs weed sprayed, you can get reimbursed for the maintenance of the property while you hold the tax deed. So that's important to know, that when you go to the final settlement, that that's taken out of proceeds, rather than that all going back to the owner of the Supreme Court. Lastly, next week is the Western Interstate Region of NACOS meeting in Rapid City. On the 21st through the 23rd. And there's two presentations on the NEPA process there. And I think that would be valuable for somebody to attend those NEPA briefings. So you might look at the program, decide whether you want to go or not. It's in Rapid City. Next year, it's in Maui. Last year, two years ago, it was in Anchorage. Last year, it was at Zion, so they move them around. Anyway, that's all I have. Chair, thank you.
Anyone further in the body of the room that would like to speak this time? Online, is there anyone online that would like to speak in public comments at this time? And I'm not seeing anything. We'll close out part of our items from the commissioners.
Do we need to do, I've got questions on the post or pending litigation that we had. Do we need to go into executive session, have a discussion on that? I haven't. I've only heard, has anything been appealed? I'll put it that way.
No.
Okay. Has the time, has the time run out?
Monday.
Okay.
Okay, anything further?
I would just mention that I am registered to attend the WIIR conference. I will be there.
Anyone else? What we were just talking about, that we're going to bring up here, that put on the agenda next meeting?
Oh, policies for. Online meetings. Did you want to bring that up or?
Sure, well, through, through the meetings we had here, it was brought up that those that are online watching the meeting need to show proof whether or not they're recording. If they are recording it, they need to hold whatever visible in order for us to be able to see that. They need to have their picture off and on during the meetings, as well as have their full name out there for all of us to know who is watching and, and who may be recording the meeting. And it'd be nice to have that place on the agenda the next meeting, so we can visit about it and see what we want to do.
Okay, sounds good.
Bruce, writing it down. Or someone who wants to create policies to do that.
Yeah, I'm not aware that that's in state law, and it's interesting, do the other counties have done this?
Yeah, it's, it's part of Robert's Rule of Order, and the gentleman making the presentation happened after a court with it, and yes.
Those are the guys from First District, I think.
Correct.
Also, is Todd Keys or Luke Neillers?
Yep.
Anything further? Trying to get you going, Brendan. I would entertain a wonderful conversation. All the noise.